We'll call the Budget Committee to order. You people at home need to mute. All right, we have appropriations and transfers, only thing on the budget. Appropriation 1A is for appropriate fees for stipends for special ed, language pathologists, that's $15,000, that's part of the contract money we, that they earn, they help us earn. B, C, and D are, is the 200,000 for the BEP funds for COVID, so it's just divided up. B is for classroom teachers allocation. C helps with the employee, the classified employee pay adjustment we approved last month. And the, and D is for the medical insurance adjustment we approved last month. And then 1E is 1,110 dollars, eight cents for uniforms for the Clinton High School Air Force ROTC. Questions about any of those?
Who approved the appropriations?
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. That is done. The transfer is a little more lengthy, but we'll get through them. 2A is a salary and benefits for a additional teacher, 21st century classroom teacher at Clint River Community School. 2B is the gap money for the hybrid retirement plan, 166,000 dollars. 2C is just putting funds in the right code for career ladder, that's 3,000. And 2D is putting substitute nurses' funds, that's in, kind of in the correct code too, I think, 17,689 dollars. E is the same thing, reflect elementary in section 504 salaries, 23,621. 2F is liability insurance, we just misjudged on what we had, what that was going to cost, so this, this catches up, 36,939 dollars. 2G is the annuity that we contracted for with the Director of Schools, 10,000 dollars. 2H is communication and internet connectivity costs, 37,274 dollars, that's for internet and phone. 2I is transfer, salary adjustment for the two central office folks that we approved last month, 28,535 dollars.
And also in that, one of our people got a, finished their degree up in the business office, and then the other one is for the person that took over from Frank at maintenance that now is the energy coach, which is...
So there's a couple of adjustments in there, okay. 2J is background check increase, 24,000 dollars, that's just guessing at how much we're going to need for the year. 2K is rental cost for athletic program to the city of Clinton, 27,110 dollars. Then we move into grant money. 2L is transfer funds for classroom sound systems. This is, we apparently got some of these systems when we did the ESG stuff, and the teachers liked them very well, so this is 37... ...each, so they just help a teacher be heard a little better. So that's what that is, and then 7,000 is the gear up grant for tuition books, that's 1,000 dollars. And then 2N through 2R are all head start funds. 2N is salary adjustments, 2,000 dollars. O is internet services, 9,075 dollars. P is for substitutes, they pay for their own substitutes, 18,121,52 cents. Q, this will maybe controversial, this is an increase in membership dues for the Chamber of Commerce, 5 dollars. And then 2R is funds for additional salaries and benefits for the pre-K program, that's 657 dollars. Any question about...
I have a question about 2A. Is that for one teacher or teachers?
No, teachers.
I'm sorry?
That, that is for, that is for a teacher. It's for everything that goes with, along with that.
Yeah, that's...
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a 220-day position with a supplement for a coordinator. So that was just, it was in another code, and we moved it out of that code, so it goes into the right code.
Yeah, I had the same question earlier.
Yeah.
And it's an experienced teacher as well.
But that's not a new hire.
No, no, no. No, but the salary was actually in the regular instruction, and we moved it out, so part of it is, part of it is coming out of regular instruction, and the bulk of it's coming out of special ed.
Can I answer your question, Ian?
Yes.
Any other questions from anybody?
Move we approve 2A through 2R.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second to approve transfers 2A through 2R, any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's done. Anything else to come before the Budget Committee today? You do have your regular supplement stuff in the back for taxes, as usual. If not, we'll be adjourned. Have that back.
There we go.
We've got them all online, we're ready, yep.
Okay.
No, no, we just did the budget meeting, this is what we usually do on Monday night.
Do we normally do that?
No.
No, 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 we do it, we instead of doing it, we didn't have any committee meetings on Monday night, we just did them all tonight, so people try to stay safe, so now we'll start the regular board meeting.
We wanted you to experience the whole thing.
Yep.
Get your panties on.
It's a good time, honey.
So we're going to let you talk.
Regular monthly board meeting, Anderson County Board of Education will come to order. Let's all have a moment of silence for one of our comrades that has passed, Mr. Joe Fogarty, I think everybody knows. Thank you all.
You're going to do the pledge while we're up?
Okay, there we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for not having everything, but we're, I don't even think we have windows out here on some part of this right now, so... Don't, don't head out that way, it might be a long drive. Can everybody hear us? Everybody that's online, give us the thumbs up if you can hear us. Can you hear us, Joe?
One sec.
He's saying that I'm muted now.
Yep, you can hear.
I can.
Okay, good job, thanks.
What about Don?
Don, can you hear us? Don's froze up.
He's muted. He and Glenn and Trish are muted, according to my friend.
We got the thumbs up, though.
Everybody's okay?
There's Don.
Yep, are you back, Don?
Yep, we lost Don.
We lost Don. He'll come back on.
Adam, he's back on.
Now he's back.
Tell, can you hear me? I hear you, yeah, you want to hear anything, good. So is Don.
Don, you're upside down, but you're back.
He's also muted.
That's the way we like him.
We can hear you, Don.
Okay, recognition of guest. No guests to be heard, person to be heard.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Don.
Okay. Resolution for the volleyball, you go to...
Mr. X Snyder's going to take care of that.
Where's the team?
Because of COVID, we made a decision to keep the, the team at home, and we just brought our head coach, Jamie Smith, so she is representing all of the herd.
All of the herd.
I'm going to pull this down, so if you socially distance, I think we're safe, we're good to go, so y'all can hear me, there you go. It's an honor and pleasure tonight to be able to read this resolution on behalf of the Anderson County High School girls volleyball team, had a very successful year. Let it be known that we're honoring the Anderson County High School volleyball team, whereas the Anderson County High School 2020 volleyball team is congratulated for their 36-6 winning season, and whereas the Lady Mavericks were three Pete district champions with Morgan McMurray earning MVP status, and two Pete regional champions with Aaron Cantrell earning MVP status, and whereas the Lady Mavericks were sectional winners over Sullivan Central High School and TSSAA District 4 AA state runners-up, and whereas Coach Jamie Smith was voted the 2020 volleyball coach of the year, and whereas the students and alumni are just proud of the accomplishments of the Anderson County High School volleyball team and wish to express their appreciation and continued support. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Education, that this board congratulates the 2020 Anderson County High School Lady Mavericks volleyball team and their coach Jamie Smith for their outstanding season, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the Anderson County Board of Education, and a copy be forwarded to Anderson County High School, adopted wholeheartedly and unanimously by the elected school board of Anderson County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on the 10th day of December, 2020.
Before Coach Smith leaves, I want to say just a couple of things about the job this young lady has done. To put things into perspective, in the last 20 years, Anderson County's volleyball team has been in the state finals six times, so that's more than a third of the, the time. She's led the last four teams to the state playoffs. Volleyball kind of changed when everybody went to all of this club play that cost a lot of money. Coach Smith figured out a way to get around that by forming an elite club where this group started when they were in the, what, fifth grade, sixth grade, and she began working with them, she works year-round, she's two-time coach of the year. We were, had the highest ranking Anderson County's ever achieved this season, being in the top 25 in the country, before our setter, which is like our quarterback, went down with an injury. We were number one unilaterally in the state and the southeast, and losing the quarterback for most teams, their season's over. Coach Smith didn't miss a beat, took her about two weeks to get things figured out, and the team that beat us in the state finals was a AAA team that kind of fudged on the rules, that had 1,000 more students than we did. So she's got the best team coming back next year, so I'd anticipate her being with state championship next year. This is a fantastic coach, you won't find one better.
Thank you, thank you guys so much for everything that you do and donate for our program.
Thanks, boss.
See you next year.
Sorry about the interruption.
We are loaded coming back next year. Yeah, we're loaded coming back next year.
I move we approve the resolution.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
So, so...
Oh, okay, that'll work, thanks.
Joe, say all in favor.
Joe? Here he is. We, we will get, I'll get this resolution to them, I'll let people that are here tonight sign it, and then we'll get the rest of the board to sign it at a later date, and then we'll make sure everybody gets it, okay?
Yeah, we need to have them down here whenever things quieten down.
Sure.
Some of them play basketball, but they're really trying to keep them socially distanced right now, so...
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution.
Have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution.
Moving second to approve the resolution for the Anderson County High School volleyball team. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no.
Wholeheartedly.
Okay, there were no persons to be heard, or recognition of guest, okay. Approval of agenda.
Motion to approve.
Moving second approval of the agenda discussion. Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no, motion carries. Approval of consent agenda.
Something over this chairman.
Moving second consent agenda discussion, not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no, motion carries. Executive approval, we had done this month. Comments from the chair, we had done this month. Comments from the student board members.
Good evening. Both students and faculty have been working hard this month at Clinton High School to finish our semester strong. Students continue to reap the rewards of academic excellence, as they are offered scholarships for their ACT scores and their GPAs. Offers up to 70,000 dollars over four years have already been extended. As of December 9th, 66% of seniors filed their FAFSA, a percentage higher than many other high schools in the state. Clinton High School has also enjoyed an outstanding student attendance record for the statewide end-of-course exams. CHS's partnership with Junior Achievement continues. Junior Achievement's latest endeavor is an entrepreneurship program involving an Airstream trailer that serves as a mobile gift shop. Five students from Clinton High School have chosen to participate, working as managers of the new and temporary store. All five enjoyed a day at Hoskins in the flat, working with JA staff member Amy Wilson to better their entrepreneurial skills. This Saturday, the Airstream will be at McBride's in Clinton. In sports news, Jackson Garner broke the single-game points record for CHS boys' basketball, with 50 points versus a stellar Gatlinburg Pittman team. So this semester, we have a lot to be proud at, proud of at Clinton High School, thank you.
Mine's a little short tonight. So tonight, actually, right now, our student government is sponsoring a drive-in movie, it's on our campus at school, and they're showing the movie Elf with Will Ferrell, so that's one of the classic... For all ACH students and their families. These past couple of weeks, or no, this week and next week, we're having a, it's like a Christmas spirit week, for both of these weeks, and students and staff are dressing up in their various Christmas gear, and today we had Christmas PJs, so we're having some fun with that. EOC testing has gone well this week, as far as I know, and so we're excited for the final exams that begin next Tuesday, and, they're next Tuesday and Wednesday. So yeah, we're excited to get through those and get into winter break. As many of you know, Buddy's Barbecue is now open in front of the campus, and so there's a bunch of students that have applied and gotten jobs there, so stop in at Buddy's and see some ACHS students and get you some barbecue. Last but not least, the AC basketball, both boys and girls are back up and ready to go after some COVID scares, and so they play Campbell County tomorrow night, we're ready to get that season up and running, we're excited about that, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Directors report.
Thank you, Dr. Burrow. I too want to just say a few words. Mr. Fogarty was a lifelong educator in Anderson County, and, and I think that he probably was, had a lot of institutional knowledge, and, and overall a good person, and, and the staff has really been praying for his family, and Jared worked for, worked for us, Lauren, his daughter, works for us now, and I think overall, anytime you lose somebody that is unexpected, it's hard, and I think that through all of this, it's really reminded us that there's, there's things that are not, that are beyond our control, but I think having a great plan that we've had so far in Anderson County to mitigate the, the risk of COVID, we do have some, you know, some cases and things like that that have happened in our schools, but we have really done, our, our staff and students have done an excellent job of making sure they try to social distance, they wear their masks, wash their hands and things like that, so we're one of the few schools that are still in session, our plan is to stay in session and see where we're, we're at. We hope that things are slowing down with this, hopefully the vaccine will help a lot, and, but our teachers and our staff, I can't tell you how great a job they've done, they are the backbone of this school system, and our, our custodial staff and our maintenance staff, I meet with the director of maintenance every day, and we go over things, and, and you know, he, he says, you know, they'll, they'll, and, and Mr. McCamey's been around it, he said some of them, they'll aggravate each other like, like brother and sister, you know, they'll fight and carry on, but said when somebody else needs a helping hand, they're there to help, and I think that's what this whole school system's about, and I can't be more proud to be part of this, so in that, I wish all the board a, a very blessed Merry Christmas and a, and a prosperous new year, and praise God, we got through, almost through 2020.
Tim?
Yes.
Doctor Harris?
Yes.
You, you and I have talked about highs for maybe the custodial or the maintenance people?
Yes.
What, what y'all, what does board think about doing something like that?
I, I think that, I think that would be a great, a great thing to do, yep. I will get with, I'll get with Pam and get with you tomorrow and work through that, and through, from the board.
Oh, that sounds great. I think they'd like that.
Yes.
That would show them that we appreciate them.
Yep. Thank you. I, I think too, you know, our students, especially our elementary schools, they're really looking forward to next week because they've had, as, as my dad says, they've had their nose to the grindstone all semester, and Christmas is a time where they can celebrate, they didn't get to go on any of their field trips that they usually go on during the Christmas time, so they're really ready to celebrate, they have worked hard, and also, we've got a lot of community people that are coming in, like Clayton Homes, and we've got some groups that are coming out from state to bring in food and presents and all those things, so you know, it is a time, we want to make sure that we have school and keep everybody safe, but it is time to, to let them kind of have, school's been hard on students this year, and they need to have a little fun, and, and I think that's where, you know, just like basketball and had football and things like that, and some of our music programs have got started back up, because students have to have some of that, and from the state today, the state of Tennessee and in cooperation, I guess in, in kind of conjunction with Anderson County Schools, was voted the top five in the nation after, that what schools do after 3 o'clock, and you know, we have, we've got almost a million and a half dollar grant that we use for after-school programs, and the Boys and Girls Clubs work with us on their after-school program, and, and I think we have a lot of things, and, and we know through data that if students are involved in extracurricular activities, they're a real well-rounded student, but they also, they excel academically, so, I mean, when you look on some of our athletic teams, they have a higher GPA than the average group of students, so thank you for that, and thank you, thank you from the board for, for allowing us to put your trust in us, to do things, I know sometimes it's kind of a, we've never been through this before, but I want to thank you all for your continued support. All I have, Dr. Burrow.
Hope we don't go through it again.
Yes, yes.
Committee reports. Budget Committee, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Budget Committee met just moments ago, and we will not go through that, was that, I assume that was televised, wasn't it?
I, was it? Yep, I didn't think it was, but yep, it was.
Yes, okay, so everybody knows now, so we won't go through all those again. We have appropriations 1A through 1E have been before the Budget Committee and forwarded to the full board for approval, and so I move we approve appropriations 1A through 1E.
Moving second approval of appropriations 1A through 1E. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Gillan Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Langnerberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
And Dr. Burrow?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Transfers 2A through 2R, they have been before the Budget Committee and recommended to the full board for approval, and I move we approve transfers 2A through 2R.
Moving second approval of transfers 2A through 2R, discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
That is all from the Budget Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Action items. Approve of graduation dates and times. CRCS is Thursday, May 13th at 6:00 PM. The invocation academy's at 7:30 PM. Clinton High School, Friday, May 14th, with a rain date of May 15th and 16th. Anderson County High School is Friday, May 21st, with rain dates of May 22nd and 23rd. Discussion.
What's the last day of school?
Anderson County High School?
Yes, it'll be at, Clinton High School will be at Clinton City Field, and Anderson County will be at the Anderson County Field.
I move we approve.
Do you know what the last day is?
Moving second approval of the graduation dates and times.
I, I, let me, wait, what is the last day of school for students on the calendar?
Last day for students is May 28th.
May 28th.
Thank you.
That's all ahead, so he can go ahead and prove those.
Motion made and kept, made and seconded for approval of the graduation dates and times, discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Prove moving the date of board meeting in May from Thursday to Wednesday.
And the reason we need to do that is because we can have graduation on Thursday night, and we can move it to Tuesday night, but it, it, I figured it'd be easier just to do it on that Wednesday.
I move we move it.
Second.
Moving second if we move the meeting, board meeting from Thursday to Wednesday. Discussion. Discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. 2020-2021 grantee and delegate self-assessment improvement plans. Is that what I'd decide?
Joe, Joe might have, do you have any comments on that, Joe?
No, they worked hard. Both programs have worked hard to get these improvement plans updated, and it's been for the Policy Council, and they recommended approval, and I think the motion would approve.
Motion made and carried and seconded that we approve the grantee and delegate self-assessment improvement plan. Discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of the 2020-2021 grantee bylaws.
Dr. Burrow, that is not the grantee bylaws, that's the entire Head Start, early Head Start Policy Council bylaw. So that is, when we approve it, it will need to be written out as such.
Okay. It's approving the bylaws for both the grant and the grantee?
It's for the Policy Council. The Policy Council serves both programs.
Okay, okay.
So it's not just the grantee, it's the Policy Council for the Head Start, early Head Start program.
Okay. So we're approving the Policy Council bylaws for the 2021 school year?
Yes, for Head Start, early Head Start.
For early Head Start and Head Start. Did you get that, Pam?
Yes.
She's got it.
And I think the motion would approve. Moving second, we approve both the bylaws and the.
The policy for, the bylaws for the Policy Committee for both the early Head Start and Head Start.
Right. Policy Council.
Yes.
Discussion. Yep. The only discussion I have, before I approve bylaws, I sure would like to look at them.
They were sent out in a link on the internet. You should have a copy.
I noticed there've been a lot of changes in here, and.
That's been for the Policy Council last, I think it's on the 30th issue, and the Policy Council approved the changes. We sent you this for approval.
A lot of that stuff, Ms. Williams and myself, we go over those, and a lot of it's just changes that they brought from the state and the feds, and to get in line with what their policies are.
Well, my only thing is I hate voting on something I haven't seen before.
I understand it. Well, that's my, that's my mistake. I'll make sure I get you a copy from now on.
Well, I think everybody, everybody ought to have a copy, whether they read it or not.
They did get a copy from Pam on the agenda, and I even know this separately. Yes.
Motion made and seconded, we approve the bylaws and.
Yeah, the bylaws for the Policy Committee.
Okay. Discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That's all I have on the agenda. I have one thing I'd like to bring up. I've had more questions in the past two weeks until I got Dale's letter on the email. Who makes, who sets the schedules for the sports?
The school does, the coach?
We need to make that perfectly clear, that it's the principal, athletic director, and the coach set their own schedule, because I don't think the school board has any part after all. I don't think we've ever had any part in it.
Well, the only thing I would say is that a few years ago, and I put this in my letter, we tried to draw Clinton from our schedule in volleyball just because they cut the number of games TWSAA allowed us to play, and they weren't in our district, and we were told in no uncertain terms by the then-director, it wasn't Tim, it was his predecessor, and the Athletic Committee and the Board, that we couldn't do it, that we had to play. So it's, you know, it's a little insincere to say it's totally the coaches' call, because I have been told on numerous occasions that I will do this, or I will do this at a higher level. My assumption is that now this is for all sports, that we're just going to say they don't play each other anymore, and I hate to see that. I really think that it's a nice thing for the community, for the two schools to play. I think it's a good gate. It goes both ways. I mean, Clinton's got a great basketball program this year, a great baseball program. I mean, it's, I just like seeing the schools play.
I think that's just for football, let's talk for every sport.
Well, but if you're going to do it for one, you might as well do it for them all, and let just say, okay, coaches, we're not going to make you play, and, you know.
We don't have you saying that. That's it for the coaches and the athletic directors.
Well, if that's what, I'm just saying, if that's the new policy, yes, that's not what we were told years ago. So if that's okay with everybody?
I mean, we've never, we've never set a schedule since I've been on the school board. We vote to approve them, but we don't set the schedule, the coaches and the school, and the athletic director and the principals do that. We've never done it.
No, there, I, before you got on the board, Larry Foster and the rest of this board told us that we would play, and we've played. So if, Tim, if it's your all's call that you don't care if the two schools play, then when we go to schedule, we just won't schedule. But it, I will disagree that it has not been that way in the past. We were specifically told by the director of schools that we played.
Was that by the board or by Mr. Foster?
There was, they had an Athletic Committee that was formed, and Mr. Foster was on it.
Well, I raised questions as well, Dale, when this came up. But again, what, I, I don't want to get involved with Clinton's schedule or Anderson County. I mean, I'll just say this up there, if I had my way, if I was running the show, I'd make sure they played. But I'd also make sure we both played Oak Ridge. Either what, I'd make sure we played Campbell County. We're family, both of us, at that point. But again, that's not my business. That's the coaches, athletic directors. And when I spoke to the athletic director, he said, we want to pause. He said, it's not my call. You do what you want.
Dale, there's another thing too. There's another thing too. One school's a 4A school, one other school's a 5A school.
We're a 2A school for volleyball, and we'll play, all I want to do is play top triple-A schools in order to get ready to win a state championship. And we were told by the board and the director, we had to keep Clinton on the schedule, and we've always been cool with it, and, you know, we keep it competitive, and it's always been friendly, always been fun.
Football is the only sport, I think that we're not in the same districts, right? In the same region?
No, we're not in, Clinton now is at the smallest triple-A school, and Anderson County's the biggest double-A, so we, this classification split them for, no, for basketball, baseball, for everything. They're no, they're not in districts.
Yeah, I think, I think in baseball, I think the only one we are in 3A, I think Clinton will still have to play Anderson County in basketball, baseball, and softball. They're in the same one. No, volleyball, volleyball is, they went to 3A this year.
Okay.
He is right, they're like the smallest 3A school.
Yeah, and we're the biggest 2A school. We were the split line.
Yep. Yep. So, and I think what will happen in two years, this is, the good thing about this, in two years, they reclassify, used to every four years, now they're going to do it every two years because of COVID. And there was only.
It was like 12?
Eight, 12 students that difference in Anderson County and Clinton. And all the growth up on the other end, next time, Anderson County will be bigger than Clinton's, what I think.
Yeah.
So they'll probably be back in the same one to play, and they have.
So it is just, hopefully just a pause.
Yeah. They'll have to play if they're in the same region, don't they?
If you're in the same districts, have to.
Yep.
The reason I brought it up, I'd have wanted to be, you know, the school board didn't set the schedules, and we don't, you know.
The director of schools doesn't either, as long as I'm director. Unless you all tell me to. Now, if you tell me to, I will, but.
I think the coaches should do it.
Let's make all the schedule, what's scheduled.
Yeah, that's the last thing I want to do.
No, I think coaches should be able to do the schedule.
That's what I've told everybody, it's call, man. I don't have anything to do with the schedule.
Yep. And I'll say this, I want to brag on Clinton. I think that baseball coach, Rob Stacy, is a top-shelf hire, and I've gotten to know Coach Keith, and I like him. I think both of those hires are moving their programs in really positive directions. I, these are high-character gentlemen, they're running the show up there, and I like them.
Yeah, I like seeing them compete in all those sports, but that's not the call of the school board.
Dr. Barrett, I have two things before we check out. One, we've got a family back here that's in my district, and that's actually a former volleyball player. Were they just visiting, or did they?
Did you have something you all wanted to?
I'm in recovery, so I would just.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's one of our former great volleyball players back there, and her husband and family, so welcome. And Joe had asked me on behalf of the board to give out the Christmas gifts to our junior board members and to Pam. We cannot thank you enough. You two have been the most active junior board members we have ever had since we've been doing this. The fact that you come each week prepared to give a statement is wonderful, and it shows how serious you're taking it. And Pam, you, you do so much for us, there's, there's nothing we could do to thank you, so just look at this as a Merry Christmas. You care for us like you're your own family, so I wanted to hand out on behalf of the Board of Education these cards.
Thank you. Yes, it's an honor being here.
We, we, you all, you all have done excellent.
Anything else to come before the board?
Nope.
Not where we're drawing.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Who gets these things?